Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I would like to call the June 11th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with any respect
with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. We have a quorum with five people. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the June 9th, 2020 meeting minutes? Are we doing that tonight? Or is that till next time? Next time, all right, never mind that part. We don't have any old business, so first item on the list is of new business is PB 20-05, Currituck County Nonconforming Campground Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 8, Nonconformities, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement to Revise the Nonconforming Campground Ordinance and Amend Definitions. And Jenny Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a text amendment application for nonconforming campground portion of the UDO in Chapter 8, our nonconformities chapter. This text amendment was initiated by the county to address concerns of planning staff and the county attorney and to clarify the intent of the Board of Commissioners with regard to nonconforming campground use. In your agenda packet, starting on, well, I'll give you a little bit of background. Actually, on page four of your agenda packet, there's some background information on the ordinance over the years. And in 2013, with the UDO rewrite and update, campgrounds were considered nonconforming uses and could no longer be expanded. Historically, campgrounds have been a source of enforcement complaints, such as RVs used as permanent dwellings and permanent additions being made to RVs rendering them nontransportable. And this proposed ordinance amendment will clarify and reinforce that existing nonconforming campgrounds may only be occupied by RVs or tents, and that the intent is not for permanent or long-term tenancy or occupancy, and that campgrounds should be used by truly transient vehicles with the ease of mobility. To aid in tracking the use of existing nonconforming campgrounds, this amendment also proposes that each campsite be clearly designated and posted, and that a register of RVs, tents, and occupants be kept by the campground. Staff recognizes that some of these changes may impact operations of existing campgrounds, so some of the language in the proposed text amendment we have highlighted to indicate items that we suggest have a delayed effective date. The time proposed is 120 days from the date of ordinance adoption. That would get the operator of a campground through a season if they had a contract already based on the current nonconforming ordinance of 90-day camper there. It also gives them time to mark each campsite with the new regulation requirements. So diving into the text, hopefully that's big enough you can see it. If not, it's there right in front of you on packet, page seven of your packet. So in the general standards, we're proposing to revise the terminology from campers to recreational vehicles or tents. And we also are proposing a new definition of RV recreational vehicle that we'll get to at the end. So recreational vehicles or tents may not be modified in any manner that would render the recreational vehicle or tent nontransportable. Part three, this is one of those highlighted sections that we're suggesting this would be a delayed effective date, that no recreational vehicle or tent shall remain in a campground or campground subdivision for a period of more than 60 days per calendar year. So currently, that language reads for no camper may be located on a campsite, in a campground or campground subdivision, for more than 60 days. So it was not easily enforceable language. Number four, additions to, that's just a change in terminology, additions to recreational vehicles or tents, strike-through campers are not permitted. Number five, this is a strike-through of the modifications. Modifications to existing campgrounds are permitted, provided the changes do not increase the nonconformity with respect to number of campsites that existed on January 1, 2013. So that's a proposed strike-through. You want to talk a little bit about that at this point, Lori, the modification language?
Yes, this came out of, directly from advice and concern, or say concern, from the county attorney. And we spoke of this briefly in the work session, but there was a board of adjustment case for the Hampton Lodge, which is now the KOAOB X West, where this was the language they grabbed on to that thought that they could add amenities to their site, and they could do other things within the campground, as long as they were not adding to the number of campsites that were then in place January 1, 2013. So on the advice of the county attorney, we struck that language and added, this is where we added about identifying the campsite with a permanent number. So we added that language on that for identifying your campsites. So because we keep talking about nonconforming campgrounds and nonconforming uses or uses that have been, when a zoning district changes, or language in a UDO of a zoning district, regulating a zoning district changes, there's maybe certain uses or certain standards that become nonconforming. They don't meet the current standards. And currently, we do not allow new campgrounds, we don't allow campgrounds at all in with the UDO. So what was in place, they become nonconforming. And typically, your nonconforming, specifically your uses, you want them to eventually go away and not to intensify or to add things to it. So this was kind of, this language, that you could do other things as long as you weren't adding to your number of campsites, kind of went against what a nonconforming use was. This basically was prolonging the life of a campground. And by its own nonconforming status, you would eventually want those to go away. Now, if you were, if campgrounds were existing as of January 1, 2013, they could continue to exist, and they could do things for health and safety, or modifications to keep buildings in good repair and things such as that, but they shouldn't be adding amenities to prolong the life of them. So that's what this language does here, is kind of clarify that.
Thanks. So the next part of that language is also the part that we're suggesting be delayed, that each campsite space be identified with a permanent number, and the appropriate number displayed on, permanently invisible at each space. And then part six, that the owner or operator of a campground should maintain an accurate register of, a record of all occupants in the campground to be made available for inspection at all times by the county. And the register would include the name and address of the occupants, the campsite space number, and the date when the occupancy in the campground begins and the date when it ceases, also highlighted and suggested for a delayed effective date. Number seven, that storage areas for unoccupied RVs or unoccupied tents are prohibited. This language kind of goes along with the 60 days. In other words, you can't, there's no onsite storage areas for RVs. It's in a campsite space, or it's not stored on the site. So goes back to not having RVs onsite for more than 60 days a year. And part two here, in B, under existing campgrounds, also a change in terminology from campers to RVs or tents, and then adding that they may not be placed on a permanent or temporary foundation. And three, just adding campsite spaces may have a wooden platform. That's to make that language consistent with our new definition of campsite space that we're proposing. And then five, just clarifying that only RVs or tents may be placed in a campground. So, and then, okay, so on to the definitions. We have a new definition of RVs, so for camper, we're proposing to strike that definition and insert C recreational vehicle. Campground, again, changing terminology to recreational vehicles or tents and striking camping units in that existing definition in two places, and that's the change to the campground definition, minor change. Campsite space is a space designed and promoted for the purpose of locating an RV or tent. Light duty truck, this is just striking the reference to flood damage prevention ordinance to make it absolutely clear that that definition applies to the ordinance as a whole and not just the flood ordinance. And we're on packet page nine. Travel trailer, striking that definition and inserting C recreational vehicle. And then here's the proposed definition of recreational vehicle. You'll see below in the struck-through language that it also said, for the purposes of flood damage prevention, all of those existing definition pieces are included in this new proposed definition. And then we've added some terms to that. Do y'all want me to read that definition out loud, the proposed one? No? Okay. So making a decision, the board should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness that describes whether the decision is consistent with the county adopted plans and explains why the decision is reasonable and in the public interest. And then also, in deciding on a text amendment, in your packet on page five, there's the review standards, just if you have to refresh your memory about the things that you may want to consider specifically in determining your recommendation. So staff suggests that the requested zoning text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan, including land use development goal number 10, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of the land, infrastructure available, and the compatibility of surrounding land uses. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest by providing language that will reduce the potential impacts of existing campgrounds and neighborhoods where the campgrounds are located, and the proposed language may improve compatibility among uses for efficient development within the county. And staff recommends approval. I just wanted to just one more time note, you know, our suggestion that parts of this ordinance be effective upon adoption and part have a delayed effective date. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? All right. I have one person signed up, but I have a feeling we have more. So I will open the public comment. I have Mr. Privet versus this item you were here to speak on?
Yes, sir.
All right, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Privet. I live at 107 Baggy Davis Langford, up north Carolina. And this is my wife, Judy Privet, my brother-in-law, Paul Bradley. Just so you know a little bit about us, we're the owners of Bell's Island Campground. I know you, Gary, I've been knowing you a long time.
Yes.
You own the Bell's Island Campground over in Currituck at Bell's Island. And I respectfully disagree with a whole lot of what you folks have to say. You know, you can't come along in the middle of something and start picking winners and losers. Our business, let me give you a history, and I don't want to sound upset, but I am pretty upset. Our business has been in business for 57 years, one of the oldest businesses in Currituck County. During the history of our campground, we have had two United States congressmen that kept campers on a lot, all year, and used them in the summer for weekends and vacations. We had TV personalities, Jeff Dane of the Tackle Box Show, Miss Connie of the Modern Room Show, probably none of you remember that.
I do.
I do, I'll be 72 tomorrow, actually. But our campground was started in 1963 by Mr. Francis Bradley, Paul and Judy's father. Came down from Norfolk, decided they got 20 acres on Bell's Island. There wasn't a subdivision in front of us, we were there first, and started a campground. People from Tide Water loved it. They loved it so much that they started, we want to keep our camper here and not tow it back and forth. So he individually metered 40 lots on there, where people could leave their camper and not be towing it up and down the road. They came down and enjoyed our facility for many years. We started allowing people from Currituck County to come and swim, fish, picnic on our property for a dollar a day. That started in 1963, and we still only charge a dollar a day. Anybody who wants to come over down bring their family. Last weekend, I had 40 people out there swimming and picnicking. That's the kind of business we are. But in 2000, in 1972, came zoning. We were there since 63, prior to zoning. Seventy-two, they zoned us RR, recreational residential. They zoned all the campgrounds in the county RR, which was the proper thing to do. That's what's there, you give it to zone. Well, in 2013, under the, I call it a veil of secrecy, you could call it something else. Gary, I learned when I became a magistrate in 1983, that there were three concepts I had to know as a magistrate. What was right and wrong, I learned that in church before I got there. But I also had to learn what's legal, and what's legal and what's right and wrong. You know, Gary, that's two different, that's two different concepts. And to bring that thing in before four businesses affected in this county and to take their zoning away, make them a nonconforming use. People have to understand, you can draw lines on a piece of paper like these folks do, and you could say this for there and that for this, but there's people behind these decisions and these big plans you got. And, you know, only thing I'm saying to you is, 57 years of doing business, you can ask anybody that worked for the sheriff department, you can ask Kevin McCord, Sheriff Biker, I know them all, you can ask them. The number of calls, I have no calls at my campground. And because another campground has caused some problems, you're really, I don't want to be adverse with the county. I grew up in, for the first eight years of my life in that black house right there, my first remembrance of this courthouse was when the sheriff came and got me, brought me right in this very room, and had me draw juror names out of boxing, gave me a dollar, and I was tickled to death, and I thought, gee, one of these days, I'm going to work in that courthouse. And in 1983, I was appointed magistrate, served this county for 34 years. Hope I did a good job, some people think I did, but anyway. But what I'm here to say to you is this, I also, in our campground, someone was saying she addressed in her board there was that campgrounds weren't allowed, they didn't want people living in campgrounds. Well, I've had, that activity has gone on on our campground since the very beginning. I've got a letter here of 1999, where I was cited by the county for, not cited, but I was given a notice that I was invalid. So I met with Jack Seminow, the in-zone director. Jack Seminow sat down with me, reviewed it, and we told him the story, and he said, I need you to collate an affidavit, sign it. And it was signed before, ennotaried by Tammy Glade, an affidavit signed by my wife about the campground, about people living on the campground. I might have given you all, this is the first notice, I'm sorry, I gave you all. This is the note for the holiday, this is the affidavit of my wife. On, the affidavit was dated the 22nd, you can have that copy, the 22nd of November 1999. On November 23rd, 99, after our meeting with Jack Seminow and the review of my wife's affidavit, they handed down a letter in November of 1999, the 23rd, stating that, in accordance with your affidavit, Bell's Island Campground has been in operation since 1964 with full-time residence occupancy. The campground can be considered a nonconforming situation and are under Article 15 of the UDO, and is therefore grandfathered for meeting Article 13, blah, blah, bunch of numbers. However, if any time elapsed aboard 270 days without a permanent residence occurs, the property would lose its grandfathering status under Article 15 that goes on, thank you for your cooperation, that kind of thing. There you go, man, you're got it. But my point is, you know, nobody contacted us when they changed that UDO and took our zoning, made us nonconforming. That sounds like a bad word, nonconforming. And really, somebody needs to address camping. The RV industry has wandered, it's really got large growths in the last several years. And as someone mentioned about the ball fields, last summer, I was loaded with ball players, softball players, baseball players coming in, but I also have that other sector of my business, I got a few people living there, I got a lot, a bunch of them, about 35, that leave them there all year, set them up, and instead of having to pull it back and forth, they live in there all year. Every year, January 1, doc's office sends me a list, tells me, we need the name and address of every camper and phone number that's sitting on your property. Every one of those campers that have paid taxes in this county right along, they get a list every year, gets turned in, sometimes you'll have a few questions and call me. But that's the way it's been. But there was a letter of determination sent to Hampton Lodge by Ms. LaCicero, and in that letter, in one of her paragraphs, the last sentence in one of the paragraphs, and she was talking about recreational campgrounds being removed as a use and this kind of thing, it couldn't be expanded, intensified, as she just talked to you about, or extended. But this sentence here, this sentence really bothers me. There was an expectation that nonconformities, which they made us in 2013, there's four campgrounds in the county, they had to send four letters, contact four campgrounds, let them respond. I know what's labeled, that's what I want to talk to you about. When you post it in the newspaper, and you say we're going to rewrite the UDO, how many people you got sitting out here? Not everybody comes. I've always, our business, the way we always tried to operate our business was, you don't even need to even know we're there. If you're hearing complaints from my business, I'm doing something wrong. But if you're not hearing complaints from my business, you shouldn't be stepping on me. You understand that? You shouldn't be stepping on me when we've tried to do the right thing for 57 years. But the sentence that bothered me the most, there's an expectation that nonconformities will eventually become compliant with the land use regulations over time due to natural decline, and they will either convert to a permitted use or cease to exist. Now, how would you like, if you've been in business 57 years, you were 50 when they did it, how would you like somebody to say something about your business that you put your heart and soul into? I mean, that's a cheap shot, that's all I got to say. But as far as the amendments, the text amendments, the definition, the 90 days doesn't work for me. Maybe I'm grandfathered, maybe you won't honor that grandfather, and I don't know. But when you go to the amendments, the ones that you went over, under, some of the ones that leave them all year, when you start going to tell them not permanently locating, if you're going to grandfather me, I got to have something in there that says there's an exception. Because a lot of my people will set them up, leave them all year, they pay their taxes, I'll send their name in, but they want to tie them down. They like to put tie-downs on the ones that stay all year, so that, we have hurricanes around here, Dorian was a pretty bad one, of course. What I will say is, in 57 years, I've only ever had maybe one or two campers that were sitting there ever get damaged, because they put the tie-downs on, and they stay there. But as far as the one down there, number five, under your general standard, no modifications to campground. I mean, come on, you're telling me, your place is sorry, you're running a sorry business, but you can't make it any better? You shouldn't, we can't let you make it any better, you know, just evaporate, that's what we're saying. I mean, that's just totally unfair. You know, I lived in this county 72 years, and what has this county come to? What has it come to? When you say that to a citizen, and a business has been here not long. As far as maintaining the registered park, that's pretty, that's pretty much of a burden to try to keep that all the time. I mean, I think it's pretty cumbersome to do. But if we got to do it, we got to do it. It is, it's a cumbersome task. As far as storage areas, I don't like a lot stored, but sometimes people, for whatever reason, will say, can I park it over here? Can I store it for a month or so? I got to come back and get it, I got to run home to somewhere, and come back and get it. I don't like to be in the business of storing them, but sometimes I have to store a couple. But I know why they did it. I sold a pile of them. I used to do a lot of work for the guys, and the old managers of the Hampton Lodge, and they had them mess their campers right there, stored it. It was a mess, it was a mess. But I guess that's all I got to say, but I hope you, I hope you will listen to me. And I hope I haven't tried to, I don't mean to sound upset to you, but I am pretty upset. You know, I'm really disappointed in the county to do this, to do what they did in 2013, pull the rug out from under you, just because, I know it's because of the disdain for Hampton Lodge, I know that, I know why it is. But I'm caught up in it, and whatever way you can help me out, please help me out, that's all I ask.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for me to be glad to answer?
Well, you know, I understand your frustration, I do. Please don't take it out on our staff members, they do a good job, and they're just doing their job. And I understand your frustration. We have a hard job to do sometimes when it's, decisions affect people on either side. And I know this has been a contentious issue for a while now. We have some simple language we're hearing tonight. I do think some things will be coming forward to try to help you out. We will do that. And, you know, I can't stress enough that, you know, our staff does do a good job, they're doing what, they're doing their job and what they're asked to do, so.
Actually, I did, I've heard about you, Mr. Privet.
Well?
Nothing bad, but the fact that-
As far as my business business-
Correct, correct.
I try to stay owner of the radio, we try to keep a nice place over there.
Sure, and I don't think anybody's questioning that here tonight.
Well, it's a dagger in my heart, that's all I can say.
Yes, sir, I understand your frustration. And does anyone have any questions?
I do, I do. You mentioned several times that-
You, you mentioned several times that the, the campers that stayed on, on your site.
Yes, sir.
Were paying taxes.
Yes, sir.
What kind of taxes were they paying?
Personal property tax.
Personal property.
We pay, we pay approximately between five and six thousand dollars on the, on the land.
Okay.
The campers pay on their actual unit, personal property tax.
Okay, okay. And then you, you pay real estate taxes on the land, on the land, and then they pay personal property taxes on the, on that? Okay, all right, I wanted to get that clear, you know, because.
It's not, it, it's probably not a lot of money, but they were glad to take it.
Yeah. Okay, how many, how many camp sites are on your, your property?
I have forty of them that are individually metered, that they leave the campers on them all year.
Okay, so of those forty.
Yes, sir.
There, there's forty units or campers that are there all year long, of those?
Yep, well, but then there's twenty-four that I use for a mix of, uh, short-term, some of them don't have sewer, some of them do have sewer, and then some of them down at one end of it, uh, they, some of those are, stay on our extended stay. See, like, when they were building the Amazon Winphone, uh, I had some of them come and stay over here, they couldn't find any place in the city, they camped over here for about six months, working, and then they were gone.
Okay.
Some of the, uh, solar farms, some of those people will stay longer than sixty or even ninety days, they may say whatever their project is, and then they're gone. Then I have people come back in that are, um, uh, well, when Blackwater Air, when Blackwater had their aviation unit, I had three pilots and three mechanics that stayed there, most of them lived in North Carolina, they would leave their camper, stay in it during the week, five nights a week, and then go home on the weekends, and they'd come back. But, uh, I got little pieces of the pie of a business, if you know what I'm saying. If you put all your eggs in one basket, a lot of times your eggs, you're going, you're going to run out of eggs.
So, so of your, your site, you're just telling me that forty, I'm just trying to get a, a number in my head, forty, forty?
Here's what I got, I got forty individually metered, then I have twenty-four that are metered to me, and then I rent, rent those lots out, and I pay the electric, and then there's a different fee on those.
Okay.
Then there are, I only name on my website, like, six tent sites. Sometimes a tent will go on some water electric sites, some of them on electric, if they got, like, a C path or something, and they need electricity or a fan, and then I got six, excuse me, six tent sites down by the water.
Okay, but, but I, I just want to understand, because, because I'm looking at what these text amendments say, and one of the issues is with permanent, you know, that the campers stay there, and so that's why I'm trying to get an idea of how much we're talking about. So you're telling me that forty, there's forty campers that are there all the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have any people that live there year-round that are permanent residents?
I do.
How, how many, how many is that?
I rest that in the grandfather letter, yes, sir.
How many, how many is that? How many?
Right now, there's around about fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen people or fifteen sites?
There's, no, there's, uh, fifteen sites.
Fifteen sites.
But as a total of, out of those fifteen, most of them are individual, a lot of them are individual, some of them are staying there to work, some of them leaving there all year to reside, and they actually, like, some of them live in Virginia and are working down here, um, but, yes, sir.
So there's, there's, there's fifteen that actually have people that live there?
Yeah, and I, and actually, to address that grandfather, if you need me to give you the lot numbers of where that activity goes on, I can do that.
And, and you said, Mr. Privet, you said, as far as six, keeping, keeping records, you, you thought it was cumbersome, and, but you, you, you would say I, I would do that if I needed to?
Well, I keep, I keep ledgers, of all, all of my ones that, uh, rent yearly, I have a ledger with their name, information, uh, their addresses, I have to have that because I have to send it to the county every year anyway.
But you don't have a pro, I mean, you said, you know, some of this might, but you.
I like to take overnighters, people coming in for a day a week, trying to keep all of that record, and I don't know if that's, if you even want that record, but, uh.
But you said you, you do it if you had to.
Here and gone, here and gone, here and gone, I mean, you're talking about a lot of record keeping.
Right, I understand that.
It's really not necessary.
Right, but you, you said if you had to, you, you reluctantly do that, right?
I have, you know, I have to pay taxes every year, too.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then.
And I do.
And then seven, the storage areas, uh, for unoccupied recreational vehicles, you said you really didn't like doing that anyway.
I don't like doing it, but occasionally.
But you may not have an issue with that, if, if.
I really don't have that much of an issue, I really don't want them anyway.
All right, well, good.
Well, one thing that wasn't addressed in, in the definitions, and I know there's been some, uh, starting back in nineteen eighty-four, I got the first, you know what a park home is, ma'am? I got the first park home, you didn't address park homes in here. I've had them since nineteen eighty-four, and they are, and I would not ever take one in until they made me the owner, bought me information, I even called the factory on them, they are recreational vehicles. They are recreational vehicles, they're park homes?
Okay.
Yep, they're classified right there, too, you can check it.
What a size.
If they're called CAT code, you can call the guy at CAT code, and if you get a guy in Arizona, and you ask the customer service, and he will tell you that it's got a registration just like the camp does, now towing it down the road's a different issue now, but I've got, I've got probably seven make park homes in there, but I don't want to only take them before I verified that they were recreational vehicles. You know what park homes are?
Sort of, yes.
Kind of like a tiny house, but it's.
Right.
But it's different, it's a little different, it's, it's, they're, they're manufactured, they're one square foot in size less than a mobile home, three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, four hundred becomes a mobile home.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um, I have a question, Mr. Privet, I'd like, thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, awnings and structures, um.
Shot guns and jet engines, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you have awnings on, and it's, this might be more of a question, but the awnings that are, uh, kind of built, the screened-in porches and stuff, will that be, will that?
I never allowed a screened-in porch, but I have allowed, going way back, some of them were, were put aluminum awnings on, they were pretty much a permanent awning, but that's, you know, of course, that's the only one that sits there all year. But I'll never, but that, I will never allow a wood structure or anything attached to a camper.
Okay.
Years ago, they were having problems with that in Hampton Lodge, and the old manager there, Harvey, I told Harvey, I said, Harvey, you're going to have problems with this thing. And, um, he would call me and say, I got electrical problems, Bill, come on over here and take a look. And I'd go over and say, Harvey, they put a refrigerator in that enclosure you got out there, that's the reason it's popping the brakes, or you just can't do that, but.
I, I may, I'll make a comment, I did go to your website, you have a nice website, um, I do like the idea that you, um, uh, share, um, information with visitors to visit our local.
Did you look at the local attractions, yes, ma'am?
Yes, and.
I was going to think, my son helped me with that, I, I wanted to list every business that I could within the county, so when they come here, they know of every place they can go, sanctuary, vineyards, uh, all the places up north, we can write it, so I listed all, the links are right on my website, as soon as they go on the website, they say, what's around there, I tell them, look at my, uh, my page, my local attractions tab, and you'll see anywhere you can go in current county. And, and I, I, locally owned businesses, I, I try to support them.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
We're not here, we're not here to be a bad actor, we're here to, to be a good actor. You know, there's, I can, can't tell you how many people have come and stayed in our campground, a lot of them wound up, they're living on Bell's Island right now, uh, they, they camp for a while, then they liked it, they, they brought them home, some of them even stayed in their camper, while they were building their new home, but we're not a bad actor, and we try to do the best we can to, to run a nice place where people can come, enjoy themselves, and have a good experience.
Well, Mr. Privet, thank you this afternoon, thank you for your time. Uh, and if anybody else has any questions?
No, I think we're good, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
All right, who's next? I don't have anybody else signed up, so anybody else want to speak on this item tonight? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Alex Spencer, I live at nine seventy-eighth, uh, World Order, like, fighting board and staff, uh, kind of hard to come up here and say this after what I just heard, but, you know, we, we have a unique issue. And we like the clarifications, changes in, in the U D Os.
All right, does anyone have any questions for this gentleman? I think you're good, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Feel free to come up and speak, it's, if you have anything to say. Hearing nobody.
Can I say one more thing, sir?
Sure, make it brief.
I, I would really appreciate it, before you vote on this, before, I understand the staff, I know how the rubber stamp works, when the staff recommends, a lot of times there's approval, but I know you've listened to me, I do know that, and I appreciate you listening to me, but, uh, please, some of these things need to be revisited, will that be done before you vote on it?
I believe some of the issues that are major concern of yours will not be addressed in this, what we're voting on tonight. But I do believe they will be addressed later.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any questions or discussion amongst the board at this time?
I got a question for staff.
Okay.
Mr. Privet said about, uh, personal property being paid, I'm, I'm focusing on that because I, I just, I want to be clear on, to make sure everything policy is consistent from one county area to the next. They pay personal property on that camper if it, if it's on a campsite, if it, if it's there for a length of time, okay? Now, if someone is just camping for a week, okay, and they, they have a camper on that campsite, there's no personal property charged at all on that, is there?
No.
No occupancy tax, anything like that?
No occupancy tax and no personal tax.
Okay.
If you're just there for a week, that, that's occupancy tax, that's the way I'm understanding, and this is a recent, uh, state law, I think, in the last couple of years, from my understanding, I, I can verify that for you.
Yeah.
Tracy Semple actually called us and told us to stop collecting on the, on the.
On the occupancy?
On occupancy tax.
Right, but, because, I, I, you, you see what I'm saying, I'm just trying to get to, the, the county looks at the permanent, uh, campers that are on there in a certain way, and taxes it in a certain way, um, and gets some tax revenue, but when it comes to just camping for a week, we don't get anything, do we?
That's, that's correct, other than any, any money, the sales tax, sales tax.
Sales tax.
Mars Farm.
No, I mean from, I mean, I mean from your business directly, okay.
Is there a?
Except your, your real estate taxes on your property, okay.
What, what would be the threshold to the county collecting those personal property taxes? What, what's the threshold requirement? Where does, where does it?
What's the occupancy tax? Or, or, I'm, I'm asking the same question, what's the occupancy tax?
I was just wondering, with the, with the personal property tax issue, what's the threshold requirement, where they step in and begin collecting personal property tax? What point, a week doesn't do it, year-round does, what, where is the, what, what's the threshold?
I'm not sure, I would need to, to get with the, the tax department on that, um, but, um, we wouldn't collect any, any occupancy tax, um, that's the way I understand, um, and, and probably Mr. Privet is just a good person to ask that.
Do the larger campers, do we collect any occupancy tax off that? Is there a dollar amount? When, when do we start collecting occupancy tax?
I think at campgrounds, you'd.
Like, they, they, for some rea, whatever reason, Tracy Semple called me, not, I'm maybe not been on the last year or a year before.
It's been recent.
It must be a message, I still got that message. Tracy said, to my wife, Mr. Privet, I just want you to know, you no longer need to collect the occupancy tax and file the occupancy tax report. And then I got looking in some of the, uh, the tax department, and for some reason, you know, it was hotels and other lodging.
Right.
And all of a sudden, the campground just evaporated away out of it.
Right, because they're not occupying, there can't be occupancy tax because there's not a building that they're occupying, you know what I'm saying? If, if there was a building there and they stayed there a week, there'd be some occupancy tax, because they're occupying your building.
Right.
But this is their property, this is their property, so there's no occupancy tax, you see what I'm saying, there's no occupancy tax involved, because it doesn't belong to the owner of the campground.
That's right.
So that, I just want to be clear, that's why it's not being collected, because of the way the code is probably written on it. But they are, the county is getting personal property taxes. And I, I mean, I, I, I think that's important to note, that.
Yeah, some of, some of them will even register their boat down here, uh, you know, I do allow them, I do allow them, if they have a lot that can store a boat down there, only the, you know, the ones that are given. Some of them even registered their boat, that said, well, I got a residential trailer down here, being the fantastic, and I'll register my back down here, and we'll go trailer, a lot of them do that, some of them do.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Um, so in, in general, Lori, they, campgrounds, the county does not collect any occupancy tax whatsoever from campgrounds.
Not from the typical, right. Um, there is maybe.
If there's permanent structures, as Mr. Bass mentioned.
If there're permanent structures, there is some question.
There would be potential for it.
But the way we would be viewing that right now, specifically with the cabins and the, the RVs that are on-site at the K O A, would be that.
But still non-permanent structures.
But we wouldn't, they're not allowed.
Right, so you can't collect taxes on something that you wouldn't allow to, to.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Now, now, if, if it all, if everything shakes.
Yeah.
Possibly, why?
Right.
Once, once all the routes are done, any, any potential litigation is, is finalized, and if, if the outcome is that those are allowed, that might be, have to be revisited by the tax department.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if this is relevant or not, but when you were talking about personal property taxes, and then you said you wouldn't collect taxes on something that's not allowed, um.
I, I was talking about occupancy tax.
But it, but right, so, but it, like, for personal, if the tax office goes out and looks and sees, you know, boat, this or that, they're going to tax it, right?
Right.
But they're not going to check with us to see, can that boat be stored there? Can that RV be parked there? Does it meet your ordinance? You know what I mean?
Okay.
Just thought I would throw that out there.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else have any, any questions, discussion?
Well, I, I think it, while campgrounds are not hotels, we do lack mainland lodging, especially for, like I said, the, you know, all the new parks that we put in on the mainland, so that, you know, that, that's a concern, I mean, not that it would really help a lot, but it is something, um.
I think that leads back to, as Ms. LaCicero said, I believe all of this is going to spur a larger conversation at some point in the future, that hopefully maybe some of that gets addressed.
So, while I know that you have a private campground, you do allow the public to, uh, fish and, um, use the waterway there, you have a boat ramp, do you have a boat ramp there?
I have a white ramp as well, yes, ma'am, that's another issue, but we won't talk about that.
Yeah. Let me, let me ask too, we've got, we've got four campgrounds, we've got Bell's Island, which is, which is you, Mr. Privet, we've got Barnes Campground on Knott's Island, and Sandy Point Campgrounds on Knott's Island. Now, those, and then Hampton Lodge, so the, the, the two campgrounds that are represented here tonight that people have spoke to are Bell's Island and Hampton Lodge, Sandy Point Resort and Barnes Campground. As far as, I'm asking this of staff, it, are there issues on those campgrounds? Because no one's here speaking of that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to narrow it down to the two parties that we're having issues with, you know, we got, we got a gentleman that spoke about Hampton Lodge, it's, it's certainly. You know, we got, we got a gentleman that spoke about Hampton Lodge, it certainly supports everything, and then Mr. Privet who's, who's opposed to this because of the history of his, his business. But the other two, are there issues there that would? Do we have, you know, I don't even, I've tried to call some of those places and people don't even answer the phone, you know, so I, I mean, are they an ongoing viable business?
Mr. Barnes, he's just a little old place, I don't think he's got like six lots, and I don't think now somebody told him he didn't have, maybe two campers there anymore, it's just a little old place.
And I don't, I think, what's the definition of a camp, I think if you're under two, you don't qualify, I don't think you're.
Or more.
Yeah, so he may not even meet the definition of a campground.
And, and although we don't have any open violations against Sandy Point, um, I think they would have issues with, with some of this new language that would be, and it, we would have to enforce this new language on.
Sure, that's what I meant, yeah.
Probably some campers that are staying there more than sixty days, um, and some of them.
But it wouldn't be as significant as that Bell's Island has, more than likely. Shouldn't be.
I, I don't, I, I do not want to say it wouldn't be as, as significant, it would be an enforcement issue for, for us, because I, just from talking with other staff, this is, it's a long-term campground with, with perhaps.
It's the vol- volume of violations wouldn't be as great, that's what I was getting at, yeah, yeah.
The volume of, may, may not be as, yes, maybe.
Not that it wouldn't be any less significant, but the volume of violations would not be nearly what we're dealing with, okay.
Any other discussion? Anything?
Um, I'm good.
Okay. Alright, hearing none, I will open the floor for a motion. Anybody?
So, we, we can make a motion, but we can make changes.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can, we can make a motion to recommend approval of some of these standards and for existing campgrounds as well as the general standards.
Yes.
Okay. Let, let me take a little while, hold on.
That could be a, that could be a book right there.
Right. Did you need a minute, Mr. Bass?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, I, I think I'm ready, you know, just kind of generally what I'm because this is such a big change, so quickly, you know. I mean, I, I, I think Mr. Privet made up a lot of points, and I, and I want to try to compromise these two parties here as best I can, you know, because we're, we all, all we do is recommend, we're just another set of eyes, that's all we are, you know. And, uh, the, the issues, the main issues that I, that I'm gonna have a hard time is the permanent residence, because you have some there. And, and that's, that's problematic, and one of the reasons that can be problematic is you do have, like, what's that stuff, squatters' rights? You, you have issues that go back to real estate law sometimes, when people have lived in an area for a while, to try to get them out of there.
And then collect the tax.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm on your side on this now, so don't, don't, you know.
I, I presided over those type kind of cases for thirty-four years.
Well, good, then you can probably tell me.
I'm a magistrate.
Yeah.
Sure.
Derek can tell you, it's called summary judgment. I don't sign years leases.
Would you mind coming back up to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
But I know there's cases where if like a, if, if you've got a cemetery in somebody's yard, or, you know, or the access to that cemetery.
Let me talk to you first, and then you'll understand.
Yeah.
I, I presided over these types of cases for thirty-four years as a magistrate, it's called summary judgment. And what I do on those cases, those are residential tenancies. And a residential tenancy, if it is a month-to-month tenancy, the landlord or the tenant, either one can terminate for no reason with seven days notice prior to the end of the rental term. But I have no trouble get, I don't make people sign a year's lease, because if I don't like them, they're out the door.
So, basically the month-to-month.
Here's my, uh, baseball analogy, when you step in that box and you look at third base, you got two strikes on you in my campground. When you walk in the door and you come in there, you got two strikes on you, one strike, you're out. I, I don't, I don't, we don't put up a problem set at a campground, we don't have them, that's why the police doesn't come to my campground, they'll ride through somebody, I'll bet you if you could look at the history over twenty years, you wouldn't see four calls to that campground, some of them are probably EMS calls.
Okay.
But the taxes are being collected on that property.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I had to give the lady over to the tax office, uh, she sends me a, a form to fill out, a long form, name, address, I have to give her the camper type, the length, the make, and the year, and if it's got a valid current plate, I give her the valid current plate and the state that it's in, and the phone number of the person that it's registered to.
Let me, let me ask another que, and I'm, well, I, this, just kind of, I know it may not be anybody in this place that has the expertise on that, do you know if some of those people that live there are registered to vote?
No, I can't answer that.
Okay. I'm curious about that.
But a lot of them do, they can't, they can't get mail at the campground, but most of them get P O boxes in Moyark or Mayfair or somewhere, they do have P O boxes, so they probably can register to vote.
Okay.
That's interesting.
So, you can tell the commissioners they might leave the vote. They don't like that.
And, and these. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, I'm just trying, there's a lot of stuff going on here, and I'm trying to get it down to what I think, where we can compromise on some things, and then some of the other things we might just have.
Bass, uh, he has a letter that he gave Lori that addresses his permanent residence as being grandfathered, so now, I don't, that's not before us tonight as whether that's.
See, I, I, I think I would.
Gonna be enforced by the county or whatever.
I would not include that in my motion.
We have to trust this.
If they honor my grandfather.
Would you be happy with that?
I don't need text to tell me I can do that, if they will send me a letter telling me they are honoring a re, a resubmission of that, if they're honoring that grandfather, which they did, which got them, though, the zoning, uh, director then, uh, agreed with, and the code enforcement officer sent the letter back to me. If, if they will send the letter, or send me a determination that they, uh, are with that, I don't, I don't, I'm not worried too much about your sixty or ninety days.
You're not worried about the other items we have tonight, if that letter's.
If they, if they uphold that letter, yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Privet did send that to, that letter to staff, uh, I believe late last week.
Okay.
You all know our workload this pa, the last few days, uh, I, the assistant planning director, the county attorney and I have not had a chance to sit down and review that, and to see what kind of, um.
And, okay.
I'd like to know, just one more thing.
Uh-huh.
The only reason I'm here tonight is because I applied for a camera permit to add a boat ramp, I've got a boat ramp on, we've got seven hundred some feet of, of sound shore on that campground.
Yes, sir.
With a boat ramp. Well, the sound stays so rough anymore that it keeps undermining my boat ramp, it's hard for me to keep it there, and if you get a blow out of northeast and you're trying to take your boat up out on the sound side, it's really rough, you can't hardly get on. So, I wanted to put a, um, a, a area where you can take a boat up on the side of my property, we've got seven hundred feet of canal from there. And that's when this chapter eight, non-conforming, said, "Oh, gee, you're non-conforming, you can't do anything to that property." We'll, we'll take your taxes on your fourteen to fifteen hundred feet of waterfront, but you can't add a boat ramp to it. And my, you know, my argument was, it's not increasing the number of sites, what they told me was increasing my intensity of my non-conforming use, that's below me.
Well, I don't know that that's something we can really dive into here tonight.
But anyway, what I'm thinking, that's the reason I got here to begin with.
Sure.
I didn't even know I'd even lost my zoning until I applied for a boat ramp, and the county objected to it, the environmental consultant that I hired told me, out of all the submissions I've ever made for people on a camera permit, this is the only time a county, a county has ever objected to a camera permit. Now, what does that tell you about Currituck?
Well, I can say that's probably another issue we can't get into tonight, but, uh,
Alright.
Discussion for a later date, I'd say.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
I, I think I'm ready. Bear with me.
I, I believe.
What, what I'm gonna.
If I understood him correctly, he's okay with the text that's in front of us tonight, if this letter is upheld.
Yeah.
Well, the modifications is not okay with the number five.
Number five, which is?
Number five, they're striking modifications to existing campgrounds.
He, yeah, but a modification isn't necessarily a repair. He, he's talked about repairing things. Modifications is, is when you add something.
Well, I think he, he was looking.
Well, they, they told me my boat ramp wasn't a modification, that that was a intensification of my use.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, we can, we can, we can work around that, and, and I think what I'm gonna propose in my, my motion, just so you'll be aware, okay, trying to help everybody. As far as permanent residence, now, you know, and you might have a problem with this, but again, we just recommend something, you know, I'm gonna say campground shall not include any new permanent residence, excluding one dwelling, that keeps the people that are there protected, but it, 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 when they go away, they're gone. Are you with me on that?
No, no, my grandfather said unless I stop that use for two hundred and seventy days, that I could continue it.
Yeah.
Oh, it does, I haven't seen that yet, yeah, let me look at that.
So, the number of sites would probably stay the same. But not increase on the same basis.
The main reason, sir, is, you know, during the winter months, there, there's no cash flow, if you know what I'm saying, uh, there's not, there's really not as much cash flow, and it was just really started as kind of a, a, so, actually, the first, you know, one of the first people that ever lived in a campground were two people that were contract, they were, they were, were working on contract with the tax office of Currituck County to do the assessment of the property, they stayed in there for a year doing the reassessment of the property, so.
That's a problem.
There you go. When you draw a line and you make a rule, there's always these little things involved that are a little bit different than what you think, you know?
Still think you're ready, Mr. Bass?
I, I think so, so, so you're alright then with the wording of this nineteen ninety-nine, because it does say, however, if any time elapsed of more than two hundred and seventy days without permanent resident occurs, the property would then lose its grandfather status. So, if, if someone were to, were to move or to die or something, and, and, and you didn't get somebody back in there within that two hundred and seventy days. I mean, we do, I mean, we've got a, 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 a statement here that's grandfathered this campsite in, I mean, I which means he's different than.
My point is, if, if you do a vote on that sixty or ninety days, if, if the zoning department will issue a determination that they honor that, then I'm okay with whatever you do on the, the, I really think ninety days is more appropriate. Sometimes you'll have people come into a campground, they, they want to stay the summer.
Yeah.
And, um, so, I mean, sixty days, you know, the ninety days is really a better fifth to me, uh, why you would change that, I don't know, uh, unless you're just trying to cause trouble with someone.
Do you know why that was changed, I mean, is there a reason why it was changed from sixty, from ninety to sixty? I mean, is there any, did they, did they give you background information on that, did any, because I know this was, this is not you, but do you have any idea why?
Well, it, it, to make it more reflective of it being a truly transient, uh, that they're here for a short period of time camping, and then they leave, and it doesn't become, they thought that number would discourage, um.
But, I, I mean, as far as I, I mean, I've seen many campgrounds typically, uh, a lot of times, you know, the season is that ninety days, so that's kind of, I was just wondering, you know, why you wouldn't be able to stay the summer season.
Well, and that's something that the board, if the board feels, you know, that doesn't need to be struck, that that ninety days needs to stay, that can, um, definitely something to change you can make in your, in your, in your motion. And, and I think it was, um, because it's, the longer the period of time, the harder it is to track it from, you know, staff level, for them, from the enforcement side, um, because you can easily slip into, you know, from one season to the next, uh, you know, ninety day period, uh, and, and we debated that.
But if we, um, enforce the, um, name, address, and, I mean, that should be, we should be able to track it if, if there's name, address, and that should be the enforcement, if proper records are kept, that should be able to be tracked.
It should be, that, that would help with the enforcement, yes.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
Alright.
And again, you know, I'm gonna make changes, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve with, with changes, okay, not to deny, but to approve with changes. I move to approve P B twenty oh five because the request is consistent with the following goal of the two thousand and six land use plan, land use and development goal number ten, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of the land, infrastructure available, and the compatibility of the surrounding land uses. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides language that will reduce the potential impacts of existing campgrounds and neighborhoods where the campgrounds are located, and the proposed ma, language may improve compatibility among uses for efficient development within the county. So, the board must include any suggested changes to the text. I so moved to, to adopt under not, section eight point two point six, non-conforming campgrounds, section A one, general standards, camping is allowed, use of land only in existing campgrounds and campground subdivisions. Number two, recreational vehicles or tents may not be modified in any manner that would render the recreational vehicle or tent non-transportable. Number three, no recreational vehicle or tent shall, and this is, this is what I'm. Number 3, no recreational vehicle or tent shall, and this is, this is what I'm, and I'm not gonna, I will not adopt section 3, given, given some of the, the documents I've been given. So I would strike in a campground or campground subdivision for a period of more than 60 or 90 days per calendar year, because we do have permanent things there. I will motion to adopt additions to recreational vehicles or tents are not permitted. Number 5, each campsite shall be identified by a permanent number, which shall not be changed. The appropriate number of, of each campsite shall be on a permanent or visibly displayed on each space. Each number shall be placed on a concrete, wood, or any permanent post or object and conspicuously located on the lot. This shall be done within 120 days. Number 6, every campground owner or operator shall maintain an accurate register containing a record of all occupants in the campground. The register shall be available for inspection at all times by authorized county representatives. The register shall contain the following information, name and address of the occupants of each space, campsite space number, and date when occupancy within the campground begins and date when occupancy within the campground ceases. That shall be enforced or shall take place within 120 days. Storage areas for unoccupied recreational vehicles or unoccupied tents are prohibited. Now, we go to section B, existing campgrounds. Existing campgrounds may not be expanded to cover additional land area or exceed the total number of campsites that existing on January 1st, 2013. Number 2, recreational vehicles or tents may not be placed on a permanent or temporary foundation. Number 3, campsites may have a wooden platform not to exceed 100 square feet. Platforms must be 12 inches or less in height from existing grade. Handicap ramps are not subject to the maximum height requirements, and square footage, provided the ramp does not exceed 5 feet in width.
Mr. Bass?
Yes?
Did you include, I didn't hear you say campsite spaces?
Hmm, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, campsite, yeah, I'll, I'll reword that. Campsite spaces may have a wooden platform not to exceed 100 square feet. Platforms must be 12 inches or less in height from existing grade. Handicap ramps are not subject to the maximum height requirements, and square footage, provided the ramp does not exceed 5 feet in width. Campgrounds, and this is, I, I want to make sure I'm correct on this because I want to add a wording that he's, is gonna be treated a little bit different as, as far as I know now, because he has a letter of grandfathering certain things. And, and I want to word that for 4, um, camp, and I, I, I'm hoping this is gonna be right. Number 4, campgrounds shall not include permanent residents excluding one dwelling unit to be occupied by the park center. However, if there is a notification from the county that grandfathers permanent residents in, this shall not apply for that particular campground. Number 5, only recreational vehicles or tents may be placed in a campground. That's my motion, I think. Do I have to keep going?
I think you're good.
Item 3, do we need to go on to that?
Unless you're making any changes past what...
No, I think item 3, camper, these are just definitions, campgrounds, I'm fine with those.
You're, you're leaving it all what staff has written?
Yes.
Yeah. Other than what you added on number 5 and...
5 and 6. 5, I, I'm okay with, and, and again, anything that's highlighted, I want to put that 120 day caveat in there. Anything that's highlighted in yellow, I want to make sure the...
Does Sandy Point have cabins, do we know?
Uh, that's not relevant to what we have in front of us at this point.
And...
Yeah, actually, only recreational vehicles or tent may be placed in a campground.
Yeah, it falls under that.
It falls under that.
Yeah.
So it is somewhat...
Were you deleting number 3 under 8.2.6A?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Under...
Yes, I think you...
On page 7, number 3 on the bottom, the, the 60 or 90 days.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
I'm confused then, under number 4, you're saying don't include any permanent residents. What's a permanent resident then?
Well, I can't define that. I mean, all I can do is, is make a motion on, on what that is. And he's got, he's got a documentation that, that...
Yeah, so I'm basically thinking this doesn't really apply to him, this 60 or 90 days?
Right. I, I would think it would be okay to leave that there and recommend that the commissioners upheld his letter.
The letter, right.
Yeah, right.
So that goes to...
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So we would leave number 3, but recommend that the county uphold his letter.
Yeah, and, and 8.2.6A, number 3, no recreational vehicle or tent shall remain in a campground or camp campground subdivision for a period of more than 90 days, excuse me, 60 days per calendar year. However, if, if a campground has a, an official letter from Currituck County grandfathering some of these stipulations, then they will be grandfathered.
That, that sounds good. So basically, everything as staff has written it with that caveat added?
A couple of, yeah, I'm just, you know, I, I threw, we threw in a, a few more regulations that I thought were pertinent and would address some of the needs for, for Hampton Lodge, but Mr. Privet is a special case, and, and I, I, I'm remiss to go back and look at a county, official county document and, and, and put somebody an undue burden on them when they have something like that. I'm, I'm just surprised the guy still has it. And I do remember Jeff Dane, so... So that's my motion.
All right.
I'll make it second.
All right, we have a motion, second. Are y'all clear on all of that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries, 4 to 1. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Making sure I can count the seven here. All right, on to the next one. Agenda item PB 2006, Currituck County Remove Plan Development Residential Tax Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 3, Zoning District, to remove PDR zoning districts for new rezoning requests and retain existing PDR standards to preserve the administrative review process and development standards for amendments to existing PDR zoning districts and master plans. All right. Jenny, it's all, it's all you again.
All right.
Yeah. Wouldn't give it a...
A lot cooler in here without all these bodies.
Y'all have a good one.
You do it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Actually, you know, I'm gonna let, uh, Laurie, do you want to start off on this one? Sure, I'll start off on this one. Um, last October, it came out at a work session that the commissioners were very concerned about the rate of growth and the rate of, um, of, uh, of houses being built coming into, specifically the Moayak area and in the northern part of the county. Um, and they were, we were talking through several different ideas, um, from having like a standard, you know, one acre lot minimum, like a, a minimum lot size, anywhere from one to two acres. Lowering overall density potential, and, and even look at some of the zoning districts. In the, um, yes, in the February 7th, um, retreat with the Board of Commissioners, we presented, uh, this information to them concerning, you know, like basically the density, the number of lots you can, and the density that you can get in the different zoning districts. So we took, Donna Volva, um, did this, but she took a hypothetical 100 acre parcel and, and extrapolated on the amount of the developable acreage, the amount of open space, and essentially a good round number of the, of the lots that you could get out of, out of 100 acre parcel in the different zoning districts. Um, and the commissioners immediately picked up on, at that bottom, the, a planned development residential, you could get a significant more density, you get significant more number of houses if you have that, that zoning district will allow that, more so than single family mainland, which is our main residential zoning designation, that and AG, on, on the mainland. So, um, they asked staff to essentially eliminate the PDR, uh, planned development residential, eliminate that zoning district as an option within the UDO for development. Um, and I'm gonna put Ms. Volva on the spot, is there anything you would like to add to, to my summary of, of how that all fell? So what we've done, what Jenny did, uh, is to make this a legacy district. So we, to not allow any new PDRs, uh, PDR, yeah, planned development residential, PDR, that zoning designation, um, to, there will be no more that, that, no more granted or that becomes, um, what is it? No new lands incurred in the county shall be zoned planned development residential, nor shall any boundary of an existing PDR be modified. So we added that, um, but made this a legacy district. So we'd still have these regulations in place to, to govern the existing PDRs that we have in the county, much like we do, um, we have some transition, not, I'm not gonna get there. So, um, and that's what's before you tonight, is eliminating the PDR. That leaves us with, um, three planned development potential. We, within the zone, if, if this is eliminated, we still have what we call the planned development M, PDM, planned development mixed use, where you, you have to, you're only allowed up to 35% of residential, uh, of that can be residential. Uh, planned development outer banks, which is geared toward, um, obviously the beach and how we developed over there with the planned unit development. Because we took the planned unit development out, um, we have regulation for planned development outer banks. And also, if it is enacted, um, by the commissioners, it, it could include the planned development Currituck Station. And that would be coincide with the, the Moayak mega site master plan and feasibility study. So you'd still have three planned development options, um, and only two on the mainland. And so, um, like I said, this was done at the direction of, of the Board of Commissioners, because you can see in that chart, you can immediately see the amount, the planned development, you get, you can just get more houses. That leaves, uh, an MXR zoning district where you can still do a combination of uses and housing types. It, so, um, you can have a different, you can have some single family and multifamily in the same project if you have the MXR, the mixed use residential. And you can also have some commercial. It's just, um, you just don't get, typically, you wouldn't get the same density as you could out of a PDR.
On, this is just a question. On the SFM, there's three different conservations there, RC, LS, FS, I, I don't know what that means.
Okay, okay, good, thank you for asking, because, uh, it's been a while since I've looked at this chart and being at this angle, I, I just went off my memory. But yes, um, so in conservation subdivisions, and the RC is in the land use plan classification. We have rule and conservation. So if you have a conservation subdivision within the, um, uh, that land use plan designation, the rule or a conservation, you know, you get a very, very low density. Um, in the, in the limited service area, you can get a little bit higher density. And in the, in the full service area, you get the highest density you can have. So that's what the...
It made sense when she said land use plan, but...
Yep.
Thank you. All right.
All right. So, and just, uh, so we did, so we did propose the legacy district, and I just want to mention that we, we left language in that says that modifications to existing PDRs are subject to the review procedures set forth for their original approval. So if there were to be some sort of change, comeback for those existing PDRs, they would, that, that process is laid out for how to amend an existing PDR. So again, in, uh, considering and recommending, uh, on this text amendment, the board should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness. And, uh, staff recommends that the text amendment is consistent with the 2006 land use plan development goal number 10, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of the land, infrastructure available, and the compatibility of surrounding uses. And policy AG 6, for areas experiencing intense development pressure and new residential development may be allowed to locate in compact village-like clusters, preferably near existing non-agricultural activities and services, or in other locations that will not interfere with resource production activities. Overall density shall remain very low, with permanent open space dedicated during the development review process surrounding such clusters of homes. And then also, um, not in your staff report, uh, is, uh, policy HN 4, that Currituck County shall discourage all forms of housing from leapfrogging into the midst of farmland and rural areas, thereby eroding the agricultural resource base of the county. And land use and development goal number 3, to conserve the county's remaining prime ag areas while recognizing the economic realities of farm operations and private property rights. And then also, um, policy HN 3, that's in your, uh, in your, uh, staff report, as well as policy WS 4, that Currituck County endorses utilities extension policies that avoid those parts of the county best suited for ag, and to protect farmland from development pressures brought about, brought about by such utilities. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed text amendment allows for the continuance of existing PDR zoning districts and amendments thereto, but does not permit new rezoning applications for PDR. And there are zoning districts within the county that allow for similar development density and patterns, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, I, more of a comment rather than question, and that would be, um, that it's such a blanket for the entire county. And I mean, I guess, we know some areas...
But yeah, I'll put that in the form of a question, too, like, my Down County people, do y'all have an issue with it restricting?
I think it's, I mean, my, we kind of touched on this a little bit earlier. I don't know, maybe a planned development lower Currituck instead of...
Like south of the Cornstalk Bridge or something?
Yeah, from Cornstalk Bridge north. And I, my thought pattern there is that just, I think Grandy's potential for development, that would be in a different...
And close to the bridge, too.
It would be a different light than what you're seeing on the northern end. I, I, I think maybe used differently.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
Kind of catering to a different market, so...
I mean, I just don't want Moayak's development to impede you guys to be able to do what you want to do.
Lower Currituck has a struggle in getting things generated of any kind. So I think, as we said earlier, having those tool, extra tools in the toolbox to...
It's another option for you.
For people to, developers to help generate something is helpful there. I understand on the northern end.
The chart, again.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
And that is one good thing, instead of doing a complete strike through with this and we make it a, a legacy district, and if things change over the next few months or if we get direction, we can pass your concern along to the Board of Commissioners, and maybe we look at directing this to, to lower Currituck, you know, in some manner. And that wasn't the direction we received, we worked on the direction that we were given.
I mean, I would be leaning more towards a recommendation of exactly what you have from Cornstalk Bridge North, leaving it in place from Corn... leaving it in place from Cornstalk Canal South on the mainland.
Because you still are able to do mixed residential. You're still able to do...
Right. That would all stay countywide. Planned development would only be from Intercoastal Waterway South.
My only concern, it's just it's so blanketed.
And I, you know, I would say, we always have the potential, if same as we're doing now, if we start to see a problem, we can address it later. But if they're being used in a way that's not affecting the school system as it is on the northern end, I think it's another tool in the toolbox.
We have one existing PDR that has been built, and that's Elan Vacations University Park in the lower end of the county. We have FOST that has gotten approval, and has got preliminary plat, use permit approval. FLORA and FLORA that you, that received your approval Tuesday. Feels like a long, longer time ago than Tuesday. And it will be heard by the Board of Commissioners on June 22. We have had...
Would all of those become legacies?
They would become legacy. We did have Baxter Station, if you all remember Baxter Station that you all, that you heard in August of last year. That application was withdrawn. Baxter Station was another PDR. That application was supposed to be heard June, the June 1st, Board of Commissioners. That application was withdrawn by the applicant. So we would have to wait a year to bring back a similar project. So that one went away. There was a pre-application conference held for another PDR that was behind Moyac Commons. There's some properties back there, two 50-acre tracks, I think. But that never, completed an application, never went through the process. So the FLORA PDR is the only one that hasn't received Board of Commissioner approval, but they're in the process. I mean, you know, they, that application's in, is in the approval process, so it would not impact them, except, but now they're, they've become a legacy district. And that, that's all, all of the PDRs, correct?
The water park doesn't have any residential there. What are, is that a PD of some kind?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman? No, that's a conditional, that's a conditional general business, I believe.
The water park itself.
Water park itself is a conditional...
I think they're Planned Development, aren't they? No?
No, it was a conditional GB.
Okay. I just was, I know there's nothing there above the park. I didn't know what it was. Something had told me it was that, but it may not be.
No, no, we had, at different times, we'd receive different plans during the pre-application process of potential dormitory-type things there. That was not part of the original approval for that. So, and I think they were hoping at some point to revisit that down the road.
Okay. Is there any grave concern with leaving this? And of course, we're just giving a recommendation, but only applying this from Cornstalk Bridge North, leaving it Planned Development in place from there south for now?
Can we make that recommendation?
You most definitely can make that recommendation. You would need to have specific language in the district purpose, that it's only for use, you know, south of the canal bridge, the Cornstalk Canal Bridge, whatever you want to refer to that. But I am going to look at Assistant Director Donna Volva for any, any concerns that she may have with designating that in that manner.
One concern I would have is if you have a legacy district, that's one that generally already has an approval. So if you're trying to apply a new legacy district somewhere else, it just seems odd to do that.
What about the thought of, of having that blanket, of sending that to the PDR to, as a legacy district for the entire county?
It does...
But then at some point, if Lower Currituck, you could, you could look at it from the standpoint of resurrecting it for Lower Currituck, or some other means of addressing that, as opposed to saying this only applies, right now, this, this only applies to the north end of the county in the Outer Banks.
The more legal way to do it would be this...
And we suggest, countywide, we recommend that the commissioners address that potential down the line, to resurrect it for Lower Currituck.
I'd rather do it now than later.
I think, I think it would be a little bit easier to at least just, I mean, they're going to do what they want to do.
Right.
But I, I would be more inclined to say just north of the bridge.
If that's possible.
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation.
Because the general point, they're trying to slow down, they're trying to slow down development in Moyac is basically what this is about.
The, the density that's coming out of the projects, I think.
And, and we don't have that problem.
Which are impacting the schools.
Right, which we don't have those issues in.
I think some of this may end up being tourism on the lower end that may not as drastically impact the schools. And I would just say, back to the, when you labeled the sites, there was only one that was going to be labeled in Lower Currituck as a legacy site. That was Elan Vacations.
Correct.
So if we were to say from the, the text amendment tonight would only apply from Intercoastal Waterway North, then Elan would not be a legacy site. It would still just be a regular planned development, because it's in the southern end. Only legacy sites would be, the only sites would become legacy sites north of Cornstalk Bridge, Intercoastal Waterway, is that?
Let me throw this out there to the board and see how it plays.
Sure.
I would feel better if you all voted as a board to, if you're going to, if you're going to approve this, and that's, that's definitely your discretion. But if you approve this becoming a legacy district, then we bring back Planned Development language, very similar to what's here, but maybe tweak it a little bit and specify, just like you have the PDO, the Planned Development. In a couple of months, and, you know, let us get through Currituck Station, whatever's going to happen with Currituck Station. And then, then maybe we could, give us a couple of months, bring back some language, PDR, and direct it, not a PDR, but a PDLC, PDLR Currituck. Would that be?
We would approve this exactly as staff has it written, and include a recommendation that we look at creating a new district from Intercoastal Waterway South called PDR Southern Mainland.
Do we have anybody, I mean, do we have anybody looking to do anything south of the bridge as a PDR right now?
Has that actually applied for anything?
Yeah, do we have interest?
There, there is interest. There, we've had, we had a project. On one piece of property, there's, you know, some interest in Grandy, and then there's some interest further down, within like four or five miles of the bridge. Unfortunately for Lower Currituck, to get the density that a lot of these PDRs are going to need, they would have to have either onsite wastewater treatment plant that you're seeing, that you saw with FOST and you're seeing with FLORA, or access to county sewer. And there's just, the one in Grandy is very limited. And there's on, there's another one down, down by the water park. It's not the county's, but we have been approached to take over that one. But, so wastewater is going to be a limiting factor in Lower Currituck right now. But if you get a big enough track, just like FLORA, just like FOST, they can have their own onsite wastewater. So that, that's something that's going on in Lower Currituck. And, and the people that have come forward...
Generally would only happen in a Planned Development as well.
And that's what my concern is, stifling that.
If we, if we were to make a motion like I said a minute ago, as you have it written, recommending to the commissioners that we create a new district from there south called PDR Mainland South, how long would that take? Is that pretty much, can we do it all at the same time that we're canceling? I mean...
I would like to bring back specific language to you all. It can be similar if you give a specific direction.
If the commissioners were to accept our recommendation, what kind of process would that be?
If they, they direct us and we, you know, with our current workload, just because I'm, I would say within three to six months, is that putting us in too much of a bind, Donna?
One other thing is, if you had a project that you really wanted to see move forward in Lower Currituck, and the zoning district really wasn't there to achieve the density and, and the land uses that they wanted, they could always, the applicant could always propose language that would be similar to what you're saying, Planned Development-type development that would have certain land uses up there. The thing with a Planned Development is, is that it's intended for creativity. And in exchange for that creativity, in exchange for the ability to make your own rules, per se, you're supposed to be doing a much higher-quality development. And the projects that we're seeing, although are good projects, one would say, but you're not seeing that elevated visual increase in higher-quality development. Not to say that it won't happen, but just, right now, we're just not seeing it. What we're seeing is an increase in density, not necessarily using all the creativity and the higher-quality development that was anticipated.
And that type of creativity, which, that occurs more under what type?
Planned development.
Planned development.
It allows you to create your own power of...
Rules and regulations, yes, that, that terms and conditions document where you go in and you set your own lot size, and you have your own setbacks. And you can go up to three units an acre.
A mixture of uses.
A mixture of uses, a mixture of housing types. It's like, the projects we're getting are checking the boxes, but maybe there's not that extra oomph to them.
I mean, I just, you know, we, with all this stuff going on in urban areas and COVID and everything, I'm here, and you're a real estate guy. All the literature now is saying that people are really going to start moving into rural areas. I mean, I've talked to people in, in, in Blowing, in the mountains, in Boone. They can't believe what houses are going for now, because people are coming out of the cities. And I mean, I, I think something, you know, Lower Currituck may, being that close to the Outer Banks, you know, you may really see a demand now for different types of development.
You may, you may.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're talking about those urban-style developments. You know, we've seen that these smaller lots have become problematic because people are moving from cities to the county. They're in the rural area, and they want to be able to do on their property.
Anything they want.
They just don't have enough area to do it.
But they think they're, they're on a big old farm, and they can do whatever they want to do. Yeah.
But with the Planned Development, it gives you the ability, the flexibility of lot sizes. You're not building off of really a, you are, there is a minimal, but it does give you the ability to provide a range.
And I, you know, you get into Lower Currituck, you run into a lot more wetlands you have to deal with, you got waterfront property, those sort of things.
Some of the soil's really good down there.
The soils that are good are really good. The soils that are bad are really bad.
You can achieve some of those necessities.
That's why I was looking at that, yeah.
I think it...
You have a very little, limited amount of...
There's some potential for that outside-of-the-box creating.
I like that.
If anybody came forward with a project and wanted to present language to establish a new district?
I'd rather not leave it up to the applicants, to be honest with you. I would like to see a new district created for south of there where Planned Developments are still allowed. And if somebody's working on a project or comes along, that we can kind of shuffle that along and accommodate that with them. So where, where are we at? I've lost our place.
You're going to make a motion, that's where we are.
Are we all the way, are we that far?
I think so. Right? I mean, we're at the point we can make a motion, aren't we?
All right, unless anybody else has any questions. I'll make a motion if that's, if somebody else is going. All right. I will move to approve PB 2006 because the request is consistent with the following goals and policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan. Land Use Plan and Development Goal Number 3, "To conserve the county's remaining prime agriculture areas while recognizing the economic realities of farm operations and private property rights." Policy AG 6, "For areas experiencing intense development pressure, new residential development may be allowed to locate in compact village-like clusters, preferably near existing non-agriculture activities and services, or in other locations that will not interfere with resource production activities. Overall, density shall remain very low, with permanent open space dedicated during the development review process surrounding such clusters of homes." Policy HN 4, "Currituck County shall discourage all forms of housing from leapfrogging into the midst of farmland and rural areas, thereby eroding the agriculture resource base of the county." Policy WS 4, "Currituck County endorses utilities, extension policies that avoid those parts of the county best suited for agriculture and to protect farmland from development pressures brought about by such utilities." Exceptions to this policy may include extensions for major economic development initiatives and extensions to address imminent public health problems or related environmental hazards. As the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed text amendment allows the continuance of existing PDR districts and amendment thereto, but does not permit new rezoning applications for PDR. And these, there are zoning districts within the county that allow for similar development density and patterns. And I'd like to add that we create a new district south of the Intercoastal Waterway, Cornstalk Bridge, called PDR Mainland South, that would still accommodate that area for that. And unless I forgot something, if somebody had something to add, I think that's my motion.
I second.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. Was that easy enough?
Two text amendments in two hours, we're doing good.
We're one an hour. We're knocking them out.
We're moving them along.
Which one are we on now?
We are on PB 2003.
Everybody okay to keep going for now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can roll. All right. Agenda item P B twenty oh three, Currituck County miscellaneous tax amendments. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter two, Administration, Chapter three, zoning districts, Chapter four, use standards, Chapter five, development standards, and Chapter six, subdivision and infrastructure standards. To change planning board quorum, require surveyed site plans for twenty thousand square foot lots or smaller and as-built surveys for forty thousand square foot lots or smaller. Clarify allowable use of metal siding in business districts and industrial zoning districts. Remove redundant parking language from bed and breakfast ends. Correct single-family residential remote accessory parking language. Allow accessory keeping of specific livestock, goats, subject to additional standards. Amend. Sorry, she started laughing and threw me off. Hey, you've got goats in parentheses here, so I read it. Amend bio solids sludge language for consistency with recent court decisions. Clarify home occupation language. Revise accessory dwelling unit standards. Update private residency terminology. Remove reserve utility open space requirements and update financial terminology. All right, that was a lot.
Next time I'm, I'm not going to be so detailed in the description of the item.
That's okay.
My bad.
I mean, is there, this is just like a bureaucratic tweaking, right? I mean.
Well, some of it, some of it is, but there's some new stuff. There is some new stuff. There's some tweaks and then there's some, some new stuff. So, um.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to work, there's no slides really for this, I'm just going to work right from your agenda packet, starting on, uh, item one, which is going to be a planning board to amend the quorum to four, from five to four. So it's a simple strike through there. Item two is adding a requirement, codifying the requirement that we, we have in our administrative manual already that a North Carolina licensed surveyor architect or engineer needs to prepare site plans for principal structures on lots twenty thousand square feet in area or smaller. And then also adding an as-built survey required section that prior to scheduling a final inspection for principal structures on lots forty thousand square feet or less in area, an as-built survey prepared by an N C licensed surveyor shall be submitted for review and approval.
Just a little bit of background information on that one. To expand on what Ms. Volva just said about, you know, people moving in here and they have a fifteen, twenty thousand square foot lot, and so we are running into issues. The driveway issue is one that you all considered a couple of months ago, but we're getting these smaller lots and people still want the big, the bigger house, lots of driveway space, lots of patio, lots of sidewalks, and we just need to verify that they're staying in their lot coverage and within the setbacks. So that was, we brought this problem for the board and got direction that they would support, uh, as-built, as-built surveys on lots, the forty thousand or, or less.
All right, item three. Item three is to clarify the metal siding prohibition in business districts in order to also clarify the intent of that prohibition of use of metal siding on facades facing major arterial streets and industrial zoning districts. And so in the general business district section and the footnotes of that zoning table, our dimensional standards table, there's a footnote that says currently that metal siding is prohibited on building facades facing major arterial streets and we're proposing to add facing or visible from major arterial streets. That, that will make it consistent with our, the staff's implementation of that ordinance when it comes to some recent commercial developments. This, this language is the same in item. Let's see. Similar language exists in the non-residential design features section of the ordinance in item eleven, and so we're also going to be clarifying that. So the way staff has been interpreting and enforcing that portion of the ordinance is that any facade that's visible from a street will need to meet non-residential design standards and any side in a, in a commercial, general business zoning district that's visible from a, from a street also cannot have metal siding. If it's a, I think that part says, if it's adjacent a major arterial street. So, and just trying to clarify that there's a difference between how we implement those standards on general business uses versus light industrial uses. That's why we're proposing to add that additional language for G B and L B. And then you also have in your packet the L I and H I, light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts where it says metal siding is prohibited on building facades facing major arterial streets. So there's no proposed changes to those sections.
But we just wanted you to see the difference in the language if we clarified G B and L B for major arterials and then we'd make a different interpretation and enforcement or implementation of the ordinance for L I and H I along major arterials. So the product that we're getting, I think, is improving. Specifically think of the Dollar General across the street here, Wells Custom Jeep in the, in Lower Currituck.
Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree in Moyoc. So I think we're, we're getting really good or improving the appearance of things along the corridor. We want to keep that going with G B and L B, but the, you know, the whole purpose of L I and H I is to, you know, to, to have industrial and it's limited, very limited on, on the, on the corridor or on, or major arterial. So I think I gave you guys the number, about eleven thousand linear feet of frontage for L I and H I, but to just have a different, more flexibility with industrial design.
And what about the buildings that exist now?
They can continue to exist. So this would not, this would only be for new or redevelopment if they burned or, you know, more than fifty percent, they would have to be built back to the current standard.
So something like Weeping Radish there in Grandy, he'd have to improve more than fifty percent to have to wrap the building in something other than metal?
Yes.
All right, item four is, is just a strike through. It's, uh, there's parking standards already exist in, um, chapter five of the ordinance. So for, for bed and breakfast ends, it's redundant to have that language there. So we're just suggesting to strike through item E. Uh, item number five. So this actually was a text amendment that was heard by the planning board and then by the Board of Commissioners on December fourth, twenty seventeen. And the language that, uh, the language was not exactly as the board made the motion at that meeting. And so it did not get updated with that specific language at that time and we realized that later. And so this is just to fix that language to say exactly what the board voted on at that December fourth, twenty seventeen meeting. So item six. So the, this is a board and, and in your packet and the memo, the, the items that are, are kind of more Board of Commissioners directed are, are labeled and then the ones that are planning department are, are also labeled so you can kind of see the difference there. But, so this is a, a board-directed change that, uh, that we allow keeping of certain livestock or specific livestock and in this case, we were just saying goats in residential zoning districts should be allowed. And so, so with that, we, we've, we kind of assessed the ordinance and so in our ordinance, and you'll see, I, I handed you a copy of the accessory, or I'm sorry, the temporary use standards for keeping of livestock that are, that's already in the ordinance for temporary keeping of livestock as well as the animal husbandry section of, of the ordinance for our principal use. So you could see those are kind of the existing, that's the existing language in the ordinance currently. So in, in making the, you know, in making this text amendment, we thought that's a good starting point, let's see what's there and then incorporate that. So there would be standards along with this allowable accessory use in residential zoning districts. And then also in thinking about, well, the thought was, well, if, if we're going to allow accessory keeping of goats in S F M and S F I zoning districts, the residential zoning districts, then we probably should also allow it as accessory in ag because currently it's only, it's allowed as a principal use in ag. So if you had a house and, and you had animal husbandry uses or if you just wanted to have a goat, then you would have to meet those stand, both of those more restrictive standards for that. So just thought it made sense that we would also allow it in ag. And then you'll see from the proposed language that there, the standards are a little bit more relaxed in ag than they are in, uh, in the, the residential districts. So, so we're proposing to add this use to the table of common accessory uses, keeping of specific livestock. Accessory keeping of goats is permitted subject to the following standards. One, general, manure stockpiles shall not be permitted. B, onsite slaughter of livestock is prohibited. Two, minimum site size. In agricultural zoning district, the use shall be located on a lot within an area of twenty thousand square feet or more and one animal may be kept per every ten thousand square feet of lot area. And then in S F M and S F I zoning districts, the use shall be located on a lot within an area of forty thousand square feet or more and one animal may be kept per every twenty thousand square feet of lot area. Minimum setbacks, pens, shelters and animal quarters shall be located to the side or rear of a principal residential structure. B, in ag zoning district, pens, shelters and animal quarters shall be at, located at least fifty feet from any adjacent well, or I'm sorry, fifty feet from any adjacent dwelling, a hundred feet from any well and ten feet from all abutting lot lines. And C, in the S F M and S F I zoning districts, pens, shelters and animal quarters shall be located at least seventy-five feet from any adjacent dwelling, a hundred feet from any well and twenty-five feet from all abutting lot lines. And then four, fencing or pens required, animals shall be maintained within pens, shelters, fenced areas or other suitable enclosures. And five, maintenance required, pens, shelters and grazing areas shall be maintained in a sanitary manner that does not result in noxious odors. Pens, shelters and animal quarters shall be maintained in a healthy and safe manner. Healthy and safe is defined as, but not limited to, fences kept in good repair, potable water available and protection from wind or rain. So that's the, that's the goats amendment. So any questions on that now or moving along?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Item seven. Item seven is, uh, so this is a, a change that our county attorney brought to our attention that we need to make. There's a court case, there actually were a couple of court cases, but one of them was Granville Farms versus the county in Granville. And the, the ruling was, is that the, the Granville County's bio solid ordinance was preempted by state statutes and regulations and summary judgment was granted correctly for plaintiff Bio solids application company. The state regulation is comprehensive and leaves no room for further local regulation. So that's why we've proposed to strike the use permit requirement in those zoning districts that we allow this use and then strike all the standards and leave in the, uh, the statement that you have to get a permit from the appropriate regional or state agency that's, that has the authority to issue those permits. Uh, item eight, this is just taking the verbatim definition and including it in this section. There are uses in here that when you, sometimes as staff, it's just going to make it easier to make sure that you're giving the best information to folks who are calling, asking about home occupations because some things in the, in the definition are not allowed as home occupations, but if you read through the standards, you could say, well, you, you might be able to meet these standards. Well, the definition says you can't do it. So this is just kind of a case of, of pulling that definition in. So we make sure we're, we're giving people the, the best information, the right information. Uh, item nine.
One more thing to add to that, once again, the county attorney has given input on that and he does not like us regulating through definitions. And that is essentially what this did, so it brought the definition into here.
No, thank you. Um, item nine, this is a change to accessory dwelling units because of a state law that was passed that we cannot have a minimum square footage requirement for residential structures. So we are proposing to strike the three hundred square foot minimum size for an accessory dwelling unit. Item ten, uh, just changing wording of private residence to single family dwelling for consistency with the ordinance. Uh, item eleven, this is back to the, the clarifying G B requirements for facades and, and industrial. And so we're proposing to also add that language that front building facades and facades facing or visible from streets shall provide the design features in this section. And then also on page forty-six of your packet, prohibited materials, that metal siding shall not be used on front building facades and facades facing or visible from streets. Item twelve is to strike through the requirement for the reserve utility open space area, the reserve area, area required. Lori did a good job of telling you about our meeting that we had with Kevin Carver of the Health Department where somehow she memorized the three things that he said back in February of, uh, twenty nineteen and still had them in there. Would you like to tell them about reserve utility open space?
Getting a little punchy and I'm sorry, it's been a long week. Um, yes, I, so whenever in the work session, I, we had a meeting with Kevin Carver, Environmental Specialist at the Health Department about removing this. Um, we, the county engineer was there and we do have support of the county engineer. Basically, we have a requirement in our ordinance, if you have a subdivision of more than twenty lots, you're required to have this reserve utility open space if you have onsite septic is the way you treat your wastewater. And that's in case there is mass failure throughout the subdivision of all the septic tanks in a very, in a very similar time, just so you would have an area to bring in a, um, a small package plant so that the people can continue to live. They live there and live in their houses and be able to flush their, their toilets. After talking with Kevin, that, and we did some research as well and we found no other, no other local government had this requirement about reserve utility open space. Um, and Kevin Carver had never seen mass failure of all the septic tanks in a similar time period, you know, in a subdivision. And he said that the requirement now on new lots, you know, for new septic tank, that you have your, the septic tank that you're going to install, but you also have to have a one hundred percent repair area shown on your site plan. And that, and, and there are other remedies if you don't want to, you know, have to, if your septic tank fails, you know, you can go back in between the, the current drain lines, you can have things there. Or if you can go to your, your new, your hundred percent repair area, move your septic tank to there and the soil can, can recondition itself, it can, you know, fix itself. It's an organic, there's organic, uh, things going on in there that can bring the, the soil for the old septic tank back to a usable way. He said, so that's really, this reserve utility open space isn't really necessary anymore. So with the support of the county engineer, we're, we're taking it out. And it says, like Jenny was telling you earlier, it is part of open space, but it's not good usable open space. You can do very little with that because, you know, you're, it's there in case you've got to come in and put a little small package plant on there. So you can't do a lot of things with it. So this would kind of free up more open space for amenities, playgrounds, things like that.
Thanks. Item thirteen, this is just a, a change to terminology regarding, um, striking certified check because that's no longer used in calling it a cashier's check. So. When the board recommends on a text amendment. When the board recommends on a text amendment, they should adopt a statement of consistency. You, you should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness. And so staff, I'm not going to read all these policies because it's, yeah. But staff suggested statement of consistency and reasonableness is that the text amendment is consistent with the 2006 land use plan, uh, land use and development goal number one, housing and neighborhood policy number eight, commercial development policy number four, uh, industrial policy number one, community appearance policy number one, and water and sewer, I think, is what that stands for, policy number six. All right. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it clarifies portions of the ordinance for more consistent interpretation and enforcement, amends the ordinance for consistency with recent court decisions and current financial terminology, allows accessory keeping of goats in agricultural and residential zoning districts subject to specific standards to address compatibility issues, and it removes utility open space requirements for new subdivisions that have been deemed unnecessary, and staff recommends approval.
We're going to get Lori a pet goat.
Can it be one of the fainting ones? I want one of the fainting goats.
Yes, absolutely. There has to be.
We've had a lot of fun at the staff level with the goats. We have.
This has been an ongoing thing. So the same lady that has the chickens can now have goats.
Possibly subject to the specific standards of the ordinance.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions for staff?
Those, I did. The driveways that were over, that were, what size were those properties that the driveways were too big? Were they 20,000 square feet, or were they 40,000 square feet?
They were less than 40,000 square feet. I think some of them were 15 to 20,000 square feet.
I, I think they were.
Times would have been 20,000 to 25,000.
Okay.
The other one was in that, was it in that?
Moayot Commons?
Yeah, the one with all the ranches, I think.
That's probably within the 15,000.
Yeah.
What's the largest one in those there? 25,000?
Now, does, does, um, so, so at an acre, you have to have an as-built. And it's more than just a driveway that you're discussing, though. You're saying, um...
Right, that, that was like, I guess that was the tippy point with the driveways. But yes, we are seeing people adding sidewalks and patios and, and bigger driveways. And it gives us a good baseline, um, you know, when you come in, um, we need to keep our lots to make sure, ensure that the lots are staying at, uh, under their lot coverage that, with the, with the impervious surface, so they're still meeting their stormwater requirements. But this, at CO, this is going to give us a good baseline of what was there when we CO'd it. So when, if, you know, they come back in and they, they want to add more to it, want to get a permit, we'll know what was permitted, what was there. So it's, it, it covers us, but it also helps out the homeowner to know exactly what, because we, we are seeing people adding lots of impervious things that we consider impervious surface, lot coverage immediately after CO. And, you know, it's like, nobody told me I couldn't come in and add a driveway around the house. But it is, I mean, it's more than just a driveway, it's patios, it's sidewalks, it's, um, sheds that are being put on, you know, at the same time. And, and that just ensures that, it also ensures that what we permitted is what was built, you know, so there's not, there's, we won't get into...
Right, and it doesn't prevent, say, during the time of construction, uh, someone decides to add a patio, but before CO, it doesn't prevent them from going in to, in large, or, you know, they, as long as they come in with a permit or request a permit for a patio.
Modification.
So that doesn't change during the time of construction. So you issue the certificate of, or rather, the, um, permit, so between that, they can come in and make changes, but there has to be an as-built, and you can see everything's tracked.
Yes, that they're still adhering to their lot coverage and their setback issues, because, you know, we're also, it wasn't just the driveways, but, you know, we're seeing more and more problems with the smaller lots with encroachment, setback encroachments.
There was the accessory dwellings that had been built in the back, and they put the driveway around the side at the same meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The buildings.
Big ones.
Well, that certainly helps clean it up.
I have a question on, Jenny, when you, when you read item two, you said, prepared site plan for the, the main dwelling and as-built for the main principal, so the accessory structures don't require that later?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you came in after the fact, if you had a principal use and you came in to put a shed on your property after the fact, you would not necessarily need to get an as-built at the, at the end of that, just...
What about like mother-in-law suite is still an accessory dwelling?
It is an accessory. And the other thing is, is that there's, there's language in the administrative manual that if, if, if we need an as-built to make sure that you're complying with the ordinance, we can request it. So for the example of the mother-in-law suite, the, the question is maybe. I mean, how close to your lot coverage are you proposing? How close to a setback are you proposing and, and those sorts of things?
That language you just mentioned that you can request an as-built, is that in what you're proposing tonight, or is that in there now?
That's in the administrative manual.
In the administrative manual.
Right.
Remember, in the works...
You need to add it to the UDO. Is that, I'm sorry.
If we can, we can, we could.
We could.
We, we talked about that.
That's not in what we have tonight.
That's not in what you have tonight.
Right, it's, yeah, it's just, um, we, there, there's discretion in that for us.
Mm-hmm. So if it's, if it's, if it's close, like if you're close to a setback or close to your lot coverage, there's, there is a language in the administrative manual, remember, we, I spoke to you guys about, we have the UDO, and then we have the very technical, some technical documents called the administrative manual, that we do have the discretion to, to ask for an as-built survey. If, like, you're within a foot of your setback, or you're within a one or two percent of your lot coverage.
Uh, I don't know that the lot coverage is in there necessarily. I just think it, it just kind of gives, if the administrator needs an as-built to make a decision on if it's compliant with the ordinance, then they can ask for it.
But this, having it in the UDO sets it out, clarifies that if you got a, you know, and lets the developers, surveyors, and builders know, you have to have a survey, you know, at 40,000 square feet or less, you have to have a survey before your final inspection.
I, I had just asked that because ours didn't say the main dwellings are not, so I wasn't sure.
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
When, when you read it a while ago, the, our item number two just says, period. It didn't say not necessarily for the accessory dwellings.
You mean, you mean in the, in the description of it?
Unless I'm looking in the wrong place, yeah, just in the description of the, on the first page, item number two.
Oh, you're saying for the site plan, it doesn't say for principal structures in the narrative, right? But it does in the ordinance language, I believe.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I, uh, oh, does anybody else have any questions? I'm thinking along the lines of everything you have, I'm perfectly fine with, except for the as-built survey at a 40,000 square foot or smaller lot. I'd like to say something more along the lines of a 25,000 square foot or smaller lot. And then if you need one for a larger lot, I'd like to add the ability for you to request one, but not make it mandatory for 40,000 square foot lots. And I'm just thinking, they're, they're bigger, you got a little more room, probably a little less potential for problems. And if we want to encourage the larger lots, I'd rather not hamstring people with problems or added expense on that. More things we can do to encourage that, I would think, be beneficial. I don't have a problem with requesting it on the 20,000. To cover the subdivisions, it sounded like there were some lots that were 25,000 square feet potential. Would you rather see that number along a 26,000?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And I'd like to include the lots that were that size.
That have driveway issues.
They were 25,000, you said?
They would have been in that range, 25,000, 20, 25,000.
Up to?
There may have been some more, I don't know.
All right.
Generally have them done anyway. You know, if you're going through a lender, most of the time, when you go to close, you're going to have an as-built.
Mm-hmm.
If you are, I would say, go up to a bank. You generally have them.
All right. Because, anybody else? Anything?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Carrie, what you think?
I'm satisfied on that, on that front.
All right. Well, uh, if there is no other discussion, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve PB 20-03 because the request is consistent with the following goal and policies of the 2006 land use plan, land use and development goal number one, to protect and conserve the area's natural beauty and coastal resources as the county's greatest asset for economic development and a high quality of life. Also, policy HN8, policy CD4, policy ID1, policy CA1, policy WS6, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it clarifies portions of the UDO for more consistent interpretation and enforcement. It amends the UDO for consistency with recent court decisions and current financial terminology. It allows accessory keeping of certain livestock in agricultural and residential zoning districts subject to specific standards intended to address compatibility issues, and it removes utility open space requirements for new subdivisions that have been deemed unnecessary.
Mr. Owens, would you be willing to add the as-built surveys are only applied to 25,000 or less square foot lots?
I have no problems with that.
Do we need to go through these?
No. Then I, I will second the motion. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We didn't quite take an hour on that one.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break?
Absolutely. That's a good idea.
Takes a few minute break? Yeah, yeah.
You all ready? All right. Last one. Agenda item PB 2008, Currituck County Subdivision Access Standards. Request to amend Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration to clarify that family subdivisions may front NCDOT-maintained streets and that private access streets shall connect to an NCDOT-maintained street.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a text amendment that, uh, staff initiated just to try to clarify, uh, the language for minor subdivisions and family subdivisions. So the first change here is in Chapter 2, Administration, to include that, and the general standard that, that a minor subdivision does not front an existing NCDOT-maintained public street, that that does not include family subdivisions to make that clear, that a family subdivision may front an NCDOT-maintained street. Just note that, that a family subdivision can't front a major arterial street, though, but can...
Like a Carrotalk Highway.
Right, right, like the ones that we named earlier, yeah, yeah. And then, uh, regarding private access streets, just putting the language in that, uh, clearly that states that any private access street created shall connect to an NCDOT-maintained public street and shall comply with the standards in 6.2.1b1. If you go to that section, that, that language is already there. It says to the maximum extent practical in that section, but this just makes it, uh, cleaner and easier for staff to get the right information to, to applicants when they come in. And then the same, under the family subdivision standard, I'm adding that same requirement that private access streets created shall connect to an NCDOT-maintained public street and shall not serve more than five lots. That, that, that part's not an addition. So, so that's just cleaning up this portion of, of the ordinance. Any questions before I go to the statement of consistency and reasonableness? Okay. So staff, uh, oh, I had slides. Staff recommends that, recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness is the requested amendment is consistent with, uh, the 2006 land use plan, policy, housing and neighborhood policy number eight regarding construction and site development standards, and, uh, transportation policy number five regarding preserving the traffic-moving function of the county's primary roads. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it clarifies the access standards of the ordinance for minor and family subdivisions for more consistent interpretation and implementation, and staff recommends approval.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? I don't have any questions for this. Pretty, pretty straightforward, seems to be. Everybody okay with moving on? All right. Well, nobody has any questions? Any, any other comments? Nobody here to speak on it? I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve PB 20-08 because the request is consistent with the following policies of 2006 land use plan, policy HN8, and policy TR5. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it clarifies the access standards of the UDO for minor and family subdivisions for more consistent interpretation and implementation.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. All right. Any announcements tonight?
The work session, if you would like to, um, see the work session with the WPA, the consultant that did the Cavendish for Currituck Station, that's going to be held on Monday. that did the cabin block for Currituck Station, that's going to be held on Monday, Monday at 4:00, 4:00, 4:00 at the extension, at the extension. Too many things going on, keeping it all straight. And then if Currituck Station is on the Board Commissioners' business agenda for the evening, so if you want to watch that or attend, you're welcome to do that. You all have acted on that. June 22, the Board of Commissioners will be hearing three resentings you heard Tuesday night and considering all these text amendments. So if you'd like to attend or watch that meeting, that's going to be all the text amendments going forward.
We're going to do in one night what we did in two.
Yes. Wow. They don't have a 10 o'clock time.
Oh, boy.
And right now, we only have one item for the July panel, so hopefully we'll get back to regular, regular schedule, regular agenda, and not the very lengthy, lengthy agendas and meetings. If you guys have any questions about any of the upcoming meetings, let me know.
So after tonight, we're all caught up.
After tonight, you're all caught up. And then I think we're better be directed to finish up, imagine Currituck, get, I know that maybe, maybe other things slow down, I do not think so, but maybe we'll be able to catch a breath. I think that, any other planning steps, anything that I missed, please step in.
Well, thanks for everything. I know it's been a busy week between there and here and back. Hopefully, maybe at some point, I guess, we're here for good, so.
As long as we, we didn't anticipate this many people tonight, but as long as we stay under the current restrictions, I think we're okay unless, of course, we get something that we know is going to be a hot topic. And it depends on the executive order that the governor issues, but if they stay the way they are, we'll keep it.
Well, thank you very much. And again, for the motion sheets.
And thank you for being flexible and, and, and definitely thank you for providing this, or two meetings.
I'd rather have done that.
Yeah.
I think it was easier on everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Unless anybody else has something else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
People got to say.
Adjourned. Opposed? I don't think anybody was going to be opposed.